I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, January 13, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shavitt.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
And he's thrilled to be here.
The consent agenda. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, December 9, 2013. Counselor DiMedeiras abstained, absent. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions: our council, Board of Canvases, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Library Board of Trustees, Recycling and Landfill Committee, Wastewater Management Commission, zoning board of review, planning board, Cemetery Commission, and Harbor Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Prevention Coalition December Newsletter, William J. Reerich, Superintendent of Schools, Newport County High School Proposal, Representative John Edwards, Meals and Beverage Tax Distribution through first quarter for year 2014, State Planning Council, Public Notice, Rhode Island State Rail Plan, National Good Public Awareness Safety Bursure. Denise Surratt, Treasurer, Distribution of November Budget and Revenue Reports, Kate Nisho, Administrative Officer, Report of Activities for December 2013, Barbara Pelletier, Tiverton Representative, Report from November 19, Discover Newport Meeting, Chief Lloyd, Request Permission to Advertise to Create Pretenture Hiring List for Professionary Firefighters, Roseland Weir, Main Road Properties, Requesting Rezoning of Platt 706, Lot 106, From R-80 to VC Village Commercial, Refer to the Planning Board, Roseland Weir, Four Corners Properties LLC, Requesting Rezoning of Platt 706, Lot 107, From R-80 to VC Village Commercial, Refer to the Planning Board. Distribution of Department Heads' Monthly December Report. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove several items here. I'd like to remove CA-2E, CA-2M, and CA-3C.
Anything else to be removed? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
Is that fully A-11 or not?
No.
No.
Second.
We have a motion on second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Gerlach.
Sure, thank you. I'd just like to begin with a question to perhaps Mr. Tights regarding -- I will get to my particular question as it relates to CA-2E, but I think it's kind of part and parcel to this more general question, which is, what is the requirements from the open meetings law as it relates to timeliness of filing minutes, if any?
Minutes are -- there's two things. As far as what's available, even if they're unofficial, they're supposed to be available by not later than the next meeting of the body. They're supposed to be approved for local town officials. There's not necessarily a timeframe when they actually have to be finalized, but the appeal period for someone to challenge them under the Open Meetings Act doesn't start to run. The 120 days in which someone could challenge it with the Attorney General's office doesn't start to run until they're approved. And then beyond then, once they're approved, being municipal bodies, they don't have to be filed with the Secretary of State, but the town requires that they be filed with the clerk, and then they're put on the agenda here so they become part of that public council record.
Okay. Then I guess this is more color commentary. You know, there seems to be an end-of-year rush to file minutes, or no?
We actually -- Leona sent out letters. She compared -- she just happened to go back and compare all the agendas to what we had received for minutes. It's not really our requirement to, but she went back and did them.
Sure.
So she sent out emails to all the different boards and commissions, and therefore got quite a response back, because they may have approved their minutes and just not sent them -- forwarded them to us.
Okay.
So that's why you have so many on this.
Maybe it's a bit of housekeeping. You know, I find it difficult for the town council to -- my own opinion is that I would find it difficult for the town council to react or ask, you know, important questions that might come from a review of the minutes if, you know, I'm getting January 2013 minutes in January 2014. So in any case, that's if we can...
Right. That's why they got the reminder, and we need to send out the reminder more than once a year.
Perfect. Perfect. So then my question on CA-2E, this is regarding the Fogland Beach Oversight Committee. So there were a number of regular meetings that appeared to be canceled because of lack of quorum, and I'm just kind of noting that maybe it's worthwhile to take a fresh look at the membership of that particular commission to see if we need to change that in order to get quorum.
The chair is supposed to be sending the administrator a record of any -- if someone is not attending. In fact, there was another board that came in to see me today that seems to be in the same situation. I had suggested they have the chair send something that whatever member hasn't been attending, and that we're going to have to send a letter out to them and remove them from the board. We'll have to start -- we'll have to begin some active advertising again for our boards and commissions.
Yeah. This is more just housekeeping, but I think it's really important that, you know, there's a lot of good work that needs to happen in town, and if we can't have, you know, folks meeting, then that work doesn't get done. So that's it on this one.
Mr. President. Okay. CA-3C?
No, he said M.
M.
Oh, M. Yes, sorry. So this is, again, kind of along the same lines here. I read with interest the minutes of the December 2 Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission that alluded to a discussion regarding sea level rise as a result of global warming and that I guess there's a forthcoming special areas management plan from the CMRC. It looks like this topic will be discussed at the January 2, or was discussed at the January 2 of the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission. I would just make a request that we get those minutes in a timely manner, because I think any report regarding a rising coastline would be of interest to this body as it relates to kind of the welfare of the town, so.
If anybody's interested, I think there was a full article about that very subject, the rising sea level in Rhode Island in one of the Herald News editions this week.
Well, it was just a big meeting with Kate here during the week, too, so I'm sure when her minutes are prepared, he'll give us that right.
Great. I guess we want to...
Okay. CA-3C?
Sure. Just a clarifying question. Where do the -- where does -- I thought it was fantastic that we've seen such an increase in the revenue coming into the town from the Meals and Beverage Tax distributions. That's -- it's what a fantastic, you know, five or six-year kind of upward trend here. Can you just clarify where that money goes? Does that go into the general fund?
It's a revenue line called Meals and Beverage.
Okay.
It goes right into a revenue line.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gerlach?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion regarding CA-2E and M.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion regarding CA-3C.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. William J. Reerich, Superintendent of Schools, A Request for Dedication of School Facilities.
Would you like me to sit at the table?
Wherever you're most comfortable, Mr. Reerich.
How about right here? Thank you. I won't take up much of your time. At last month's school committee meeting, we had a request from a resident, Donna Cook, regarding what process or policies the school committee has in regarding naming fields or gymnasiums. And as we talked about at the school committee meeting, we don't have any policies or a process for that. In fact, I've been principal or superintendent since '98, and we have never had such a request. We've had dedications for the fields and the schools, but there were no naming of, let's say, the football field. As part of our discussion, the school committee asked that maybe we should get your input, the council's input, as to is that something the council handles, or is that something the council would be comfortable with us addressing?
Well, I'll defer to the town solicitor, but before I do, I'll just say my own personal opinion is that it is a school issue and that the school should be the one making that decision, but then now I'll defer to Town Council.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, I did look at it. I couldn't find anything between last Wednesday, when this came up with the agenda, and I couldn't find anything on point in either the code or the ordinances, either way. In looking at it more generally, it would appear that since the schools have the control over the operation of it and so forth, and really the town is just the owner, and when and if the schools give it up, we take it back, it seems to be more appropriately as a school function. I did do some research to see what other communities did. In fact, there are certain programs. The town in Aragansett has a whole guidelines on naming school facilities. The only thing on point maybe was Charahoe, which is a multi-regional district, requires -- it's to the school committee, but the school committee also says that it shall obtain the approval of the appropriate member town council regarding the naming of the facilities within that town. So if it's located in Hopkinton, they would get the Hopkinton Town Council approval for that, but that's a multiple thing. So I think the answer is it's clearly the school committee's action in the first instance. Whether you as a town council want to have the fallback and say that, you know, once they've made a determination, it has to go to you for approval, that's something you could do, but it's not necessarily consistent with your role of just being the landlord.
Now, Baccarat School Gym is dedicated to...
Yes, those have been named. Those have been named.
Who did that? I think it was the school committee.
If you look at the plaques, it doesn't really say. It just says the year and who it's named after. Same with the high school gym.
Do you remember Sally who? No.
That's why we couldn't remember.
Yeah.
I mean, it went so far back.
That's Stephen Knight.
Stephen Knight.
Yeah.
And that was...
And our opinion was similar to President Rodrick's, but we wanted to just bring it to you before we move forward with it.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, the council can speak, but again, I firmly believe that being a school facility, you would know better whether or not it should be dedicated, you know, to whomever, and I feel that if the town was dedicating something, it would be town property or town building if they ever want to dedicate something.
I also agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think it's a largely symbolic gesture rather than any, you know, authoritative or legal designation, so.
Okay, I will take that back to the school committee, and we'll get started on development policy, protocols. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reerich.
You sure you don't want to take?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Certainly some criteria.
Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Mr. Jeff Belli, new library construction. And just remind everyone that it is informational only, that the council does not comment on it.
Thank you, council, for hearing me tonight. The one thing I did go up to the new construction at the new Tiverton Library, I did see some things wrong that I have brought to the attention of the building official. He did explain to me that everything falls under the engineering department. Myself as a taxpayer and somebody that isn't a construction industry myself, I am an electrician by trade. What I would like to see, especially if this building is going to be taken care of after it is completed by the town, I would like to see somebody from the town, you know, following the construction to make sure our best interest is kept as well as make sure it's built right. That way, we're not inheriting a building that was improperly built, you know, because a lot of engineers that I've run into myself, they're from out of state. A lot of the states don't require the codes that we do. You know, let's just make sure it's built right, and that way we can have a library that we're all proud of and lasts for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Barbara Pelletier, ABC 6 TV Visit.
As we can all see that...
Before you go, it wasn't investigative, was it?
Right.
No.
No. Well, as we can all see, any traffic that sells food or anything in this town benefits as a -- you just acknowledged the tax receipts. So we're all more and more becoming aware of it, and in watching Channel 6, I noticed there was a contest, my town, that one could submit a story to, and they would come and actually do something about the town, and I said, what better way to get free publicity? So I sent the story in, and you can all have a copy, and they actually -- John DeLuca will be coming next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday, at 11 o'clock, and I highlighted, as you can see, Fort Barton and that, and I have been in touch with Gary, with Gary Blunkett, and he'll be meeting here, too, and several other people, I hope. And what I need to know, and I know that you can't -- I can't get any back feed, but you can raise your thumbs or whatever, that I do need maybe somebody to tell me, are we having the -- because they did call and ask, are we having any events in town this summer or in the near future, or anything that would be of interest to anybody listening to the story? So if anybody knows of anything, give me a call, let me know, and we can, I think, put on a positive show, all for free.
Just as a side, I would direct that to the acting town administrator, and maybe she can point you in the right direction there.
We have already talked.
Good. And she's given you, I'm sure, some information.
Yes, yes. But if somebody in the public here, it's a wide audience, so if you know of anything, fantastic. We know -- I know we have pot and gray day, but I mean, there must be other things happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings and public presentations. Paul Dancerow, Baxter Dancerow and Associates, LLP, Presentation of the Four-Year Ending June 30, 2013 Financial Report. And just for the records, just each state your name so that we can get them on the record.
Okay. Well, okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone and Happy New Year, and this is really one of the first times I can say that, because we're done so early, we're really on one of the first meetings of the New Year, so Happy New Year all, and my name is Paul Dancerow. I'm a partner with the accounting firm of Baxter, Dancerow, and Associates.
My name's Greg Creasy. I'm the manager with the firm, and I ran the job.
Great.
I'm Denise Surratt. I'm the treasurer.
I'm sorry, you again.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the town. Thank you for allowing us to be here and perform the services that we did for the town, and like I said before, we were able to finish in a timely manner, which the state general requires the audit to be completed and issued by 12/31/2013, so we met that deadline, and we're very glad to be able to do that. And I'd like to thank Denise and her staff for, you know, getting us the information in a timely manner, very good information, which allowed us to complete the audit on time, and also Doug Fiore over at the school department for same thing, his staff and getting us the information in a timely manner, which allows us to, you know, do the audit efficiently and timely. If anyone has a copy of the audit, I'd like to go over the highlights of the audit, and then maybe after that, if you have any questions, we could go over them in detail. We did have the -- we do two audits here. We do a financial audit, and we do a federal compliance audit, too. Both audits had unmodified opinions, meaning that there were no issues that rose to the level that we would have to make a modification to the opinion that would, you know, have something to do with any federal issues or financial statement issues. The audit, we've been doing it for quite a few years, where since 2003, I think Gatsby 34 has come out and really required the presentation that begins on page 14, and that is a -- they call it a full accrual presentation, meaning what you're -- what we're presenting here, or the town is presenting here, is a full balance sheet of its assets, of its liabilities, on a more of a corporate-type presentation. So you're really showing a long-term economic presentation of the financials for the town, rather than on the pages that we'll come to in the fund financial statements, which tend to present a more focused type of balance sheet and revenue and expenditures for the year, more on a cash basis, rather than a long-term outlook. And you'll see on page 14, the presentation of the net position, they call it now, for this year. It shows the capital assets of the town, and it shows the liabilities of the town, and also the long-term liabilities, not just accounts payable, but long-term liabilities such as bond debt, any type of OPEB liabilities, pension liabilities. Those types of liabilities are presented here also. And the assets of the town, like when you buy police cars, when you're creating your budget, you're putting a police car in a budget, maybe for $40,000, and you expense that for the budget year. But in this presentation, you'll take that police car, you'll put it up on a balance sheet, and you'll depreciate that car over three to five years, and then the police car has really a net book value of zero at the end of that time, and but when you're doing it on a budgetary presentation, you're expensing that car in the first year, so you're moving on to your next year, you know, really in the next budget. The next page that you see, 15, is really like the profit and loss of that full accrual presentation. It shows the expenditures of the governmental funds, meaning your general fund, your special revenue funds, any type of capital project funds, and they're all summarized on this page, and it actually shows you the expenditures on the left-hand side and the program revenues that those types of expenditures bring in, because public safety generates revenue, and so does public works, you know, and so does the clerk's office in generating marriage licenses, dog licenses, the police issue tickets. They generate revenues for their expenditures, and what Gatsby 34 was really trying to do was to try to show how these miscellaneous revenues help out in the budget, and they're not totally reliant on property taxes to meet their expenditures. So that -- this report kind of shows that, and then it shows the governmental activities on the right-hand side, and obviously every department shows a deficit, because they do at some point rely on property taxes to substantiate the expenditures. And then that report kind of feeds down into where you're showing your property tax revenue, your state aid, and other miscellaneous types of revenue, and then coming up to a change in net assets. And the change in net assets this year, for the governmental activities, it went up by $1,653, okay? And one of the big pieces of that is, which we'll see on a reconciliation, is when you pay bond debt off. Bond debt principal goes to an expense in the budgetary presentation, but it goes up on a balance sheet and reduces principal on... So when you -- if you spend $1,600,000 on principal, that comes off the expenditure line and goes back up on the balance sheet, so it really is a positive, you know, reconciliation for this type of presentation. And usually that's the biggest number. It's either capital expenditures or bond debt that really has an effect on this type of number and drives this number up or down. But for the surplus, and now the overall surplus in the net position is $10 million about for the town, so that's really your net position for the year, and that agrees to the $10 million on page 14 that you'll see in the governmental activities. So that's almost like your fund balance, in a way, on a total full accrual basis. But most towns, really, what drives the budget, what drives your main focus, is on page 16, in the short-term approach now I'm talking, is the presentation you'll see on here of the governmental funds. Now, you have your general fund, you have your school unrestricted fund, which is like the general fund of the school, and then you have your other non-major governmental funds, and all those really are a summarization of all the types of grants that you get for the year, your educational grants, your Title I grants, your IDA grants, any capital project funds that you have that are not deemed to be major funds, those flow into these other non-major funds. But you'll see in the general fund, you'll see the balance sheet of the general fund, cash, real estate taxes that are receivables, you'll see prepaid expenses, accounts payable that are expenses that were incurred by the end of the year, 6/30/13 go on here, and let's see, we have other accrued expenses like payroll, those types of expenses show up on here, and then you have your fund balances, which now there's more categorizations of these fund balances, because the Government Accounting Standards Board came out with Statement 54 last year, which said you have to categorize these now in five different categories rather than one or two. And it shows your fund balance for the year, the cumulative unassigned fund balance, meaning it didn't fall into one of these other five categories, would be the $2,237 for the year. And that's your unassigned, meaning the town has not committed, restricted those types of balances in any way and can be used in future operations of the town. And the school has the same thing, their balance sheet, cash, accounts payable, accrued expenditures like payroll, and then they have their fund balance, which in total is $1,472. And really, they don't have an unassigned fund balance. It's really only the general fund that can have that, because school funds, by the nature of a special revenue fund, can't be unassigned, because it's a special revenue fund, and the state basically says that these funds are restricted for school purposes. Page 17 gives you your really profit and loss statement for the year, showing revenues, expenditures, and ending up in a net change in the fund balance, and there was a net change in the fund balance this year of a positive $300,000 for the general fund and a positive $262,000 for the school operations. And then the other non-major governmental funds, that $520,000 is really timing issues where maybe the expenditures for that grant were not fully expended for the year, and next year they'll be fully expended. So those -- that's really not, you know, surpluses that can be used in town operations, but can be used to supplant some operations such as education. Page 18 is really when I was talking about the reconciliation of how you get from the full accrual to the -- from the government -- the governmental funds to the full accrual. You'll see here, you know, capital outlays now get reclassified to balance sheet items. Those items get depreciated, so you'll see $1,754 depreciation for the year, and this is historical items. These are things that were purchased years ago that are now being depreciated over, like I said, five, 10, 15, 20 years. And then you'll see the repayment of debt principal, you get $1,978. That's being reclassified now from an expenditure to a balance sheet item, so that gives you a overall $1,653 positive increase to your statement of net position. Then you have your statement of net assets for, they call them proprietary funds, and proprietary funds are really funds that don't rely on property taxes being assessed. They -- I mean, the cafeteria fund is hopefully self-sufficient. You charge... I mean, the cafeteria fund is hopefully self-sufficient. You charge, you know, fees for lunch services, things like that, that will cover the expenses of the operations for the cafeteria fund for the school. And the land acquisition fund was created many years ago, and that's not really doing much in the operations-wise for the years. It has no revenue. It just carries the asset, really, of that industrial park, from what I understand, that was purchased quite a few years ago. Next page you'll see is the operations of the cafeteria fund. Like I said, there was really no activity in the land acquisition fund. And then there's, on page 21, it just shows a, a cash flow, really, because enterprise funds and proprietary funds are required to show a cash flow statement, meaning you break it down to a cash basis, rather than accrual basis, for expenditures and for revenues. And to see the, the town's presentation on a budgetary basis, you would really have to go to page 71. And that shows you how the town did on, on a budgetary basis compared to actual. Shows the variances between revenues taken in, expenditures going out, and how you did against your budget. And on a budgetary basis, the town actually showed a surplus of $654,000, because what the town was doing was using $354,000 of accumulated surplus in prior years, and saying, we're going to use those to, on a budgetary basis, to offset And then, just in more detail, this report really works on detail in the back of the report, and just summarizes and summarizes more and more up until the front of the report. So you'll see on pages 72, 73, 74, the detail of the budget to actual and, and various town expenditure items. And like I said, also, we, we do a federal audit, a federal compliance audit, meaning we'll look at, based on criteria that we have to meet, we look at federal expenditures. You get Title I grants, you get IDA grants, CDBG money. Those types of federal expenditures have to be looked at with more of a microscope, really, where there's 14 compliance issues that the federal government says we have to look at, based on that program that we're looking at. We don't look at every program. It's a criteria that we have to go through to say, what's a major fund, what's not a major fund within the federal audit. So we'll look at that and see if the monies have been spelt, spent correctly within that 14 criteria, point criteria. And we had, obviously, another unmodified opinion. We didn't find any issues that the monies weren't being spent properly or anything like that. So we issue our report on that in the back of the report, really on page 110. It's a report that just says, you know, we didn't find any issues in internal control that we felt was worth mentioning, that was material to the financial statements. We would say that on page 108 and 109. 110 is the federal compliance report that we actually give an opinion, saying we didn't find any material non-compliance issues. And then page 112 gives, gives a listing, really, of all the federal monies that you received, and just showing, and then so on, 114. We, we actually chose this year the programs for the school, the IDA grant, and that was the only one we really had to look at this year, based on the criteria that we have to follow. And didn't have any, like I said, didn't have any issues with that. It was unmodified opinion. Overall, like I said, the town had a surplus for the year, and so did the school, which is good, good to see, obviously, in, in these times. And we didn't have any other issues. We're very happy to work with Denise this year. She's done a very good job for, for us as auditors, and, and I think for the town also. And same thing with Doug Fury over at the school. We had a very good working relationship. And that's really a summarization of the report, but if you have any specifics that you wanted to go over, obviously, we'd be more than willing to discuss them with you, either now, or if you had any questions with Denise later, that you could follow up to us.
Anything from the council?
I just had a couple of quick questions. So, just so that I'm understanding things clearly here. What sort of fund does the monies in the general fund, what sort of account? Is that just sitting in a plain old piggy bank? Is that, like, bearing any interest? Is it just, without getting too technical, I suppose?
Actually, we have a new product that is...
Denise, why?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Any liquid money, we do our best to invest it if it's, if it's just idle. It's always growing, you know, as we, especially every quarter, as we collect $50 million in real estate taxes. So right now, we're averaging around 0.15%. Some of the cedars are paying 0.19%, but it has to stay pretty good.
So I just, this is more of a, a general question. So as a percent of our kind of operating budget, the general fund stands at 5.35% based on the latest numbers, and the charter requires us to maintain a minimum of 3%. So I'm curious, historically, what has the town done with the difference there? I understand the general fund is there in terms of, you know, some sort of catastrophic event. You know, there's, there's some funds to go to here. But I'm just curious more along the lines of, do we need all 5.35%? Or could a percentage of that money be used in a different manner to help with things around town?
There's also another document, that, a policy document, that's within the last two years or so, that is somewhat of a guiding point of information for our goals for the general fund?
Would love to see that.
The general fund reserve board, it sets that you...
The town council policy where...
The town council set that.
Yes.
It's a council policy, yes. And where it kind of edges, the, keeps increasing the general fund unrestricted reserve till it reaches, reaches a point of 5%. And if you follow that policy, which is in 2014, it, the target percent, it's not a, written in stone, is 3.75%.
I'm sorry, what was the last?
3.75.
3.75%.
Traditionally, for, for those who've been around longer, and even before, Mr. Lambert and myself, unfortunately, for years, the general fund didn't even come close
Right.
to the charter requirement.
Sure.
And so, over the last six years, the council, previous councils in this council, has made an effort to ensure that we brought those, those numbers up, because we were at a point that if anything catastrophic happened in town, we would not have been able to react.
Yeah. And that's a fantastic thing. I'm only asking the question, as we sit and deliberate budget in a very thorough and thoughtful manner, does it force a, a level of creativity when it comes to funding things? And I'm not saying deplete it to 3%. By no means am I advocating that. I'm just asking the question, is some portion of that money better served for addressing certain things?
That would be in the form of a resolution. If the town council decided to take, like, 1% out to do offset taxes, or to buy some big purchase item, it would have to be at the referendum as a resolution.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, the Budget Committee or the town council.
Yeah.
Or a citizen could request it also.
Right.
Sure.
Because actually, if, if you go back way before all of our times, they used to quote-unquote raid the general fund.
Sure.
In order to make things look good. And, you know, obviously...
And spend money on things.
Well, I think in the past, they have us offset taxes with it. I, I think I was on the school committee when they did that.
Yeah. And, and the conversation is probably best served when we're debating budget, but I, I read that with particular interest in trying to find or think about other ways to use that money in a, perhaps a more productive manner than sitting there.
More useful has been to try to build it up.
Increase it.
Sure. And rightfully so.
The last time we seriously discussed that particular issue, I think when, when the math came down to it, we saw a much greater benefit to keeping the money in the general fund, to raise it to a, to a goal that would potentially help us when we went to bond in the future years, and also, just generally, having a more stable financial position, rather than what turned out to be, what would have been a very small benefit to the individual taxpayer. You know, on, on paper, it turned out to be a very, you know, the number we were considering turned out to be a very small amount of money to each individual taxpayer. You know, I, I think it was $100 or something like that. I don't even think it was that. It was a very small amount of money, which we thought was probably not worth the, the effort and the process, so.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any way I could look at that at some point?
Yeah, I think it was in your original packet.
It might have been.
Yeah.
That is deep in the closet, Mr. President.
I just, I have a quick question about, you said it's 5.35%?
Yes. Yes, it is 5.35%.
What is that based on? That's based on the current year's entire budget?
I know that had always been discussion, what is...
Right.
So I just used the number that I...
The current year that we're in, or the current year that, okay, good.
The current year that we're in.
All right. Because it would be even higher.
Right.
Well, Mr. Gerlach raises a good point, however, and that is, as a matter of policy, at some point, we should decide exactly how much we're going to have in the piggy bank. As Mr. Rodrick pointed out, we didn't even meet the charter requirement five years ago, when we took office. As a matter of fact, as I recall, we had about one-third of what was required under the charter.
Yeah.
So, so, so instead of the three, yeah, instead of the 3%, we had like about 1%. So this has been a vast improvement, but I think, as Mr. Gerlach points out, I, I don't think we have to necessarily go to 10, but it would be a policy decision, perhaps with the council at some point, especially if this happens again next year, that we have a surplus, a profit, so to speak, that we might want to take a look at this percentage and say, well, you know, maybe 6% is enough, 7%, whatever the number is that we decide as a, as a council. But I would not want to go back to the 1%.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
One thing I do suggest to, and I see in all towns, is that if you are going to use your general fund's surplus, accumulative surplus, you do it for a specific item, a capital project item, I think I've mentioned this last year, because you don't want to build that into your operations, because now you're...
Oh, yeah.
You go to the well, and then you say, it's not there next year, and now you're... And I've seen communities do that. They do it time and time again. They whittle their fund balance down. Now that $1 million isn't there anymore. And they've been feeding off that for years, and, you know.
Comes to crutch.
Yeah, it becomes a crutch, really. And, and I see a lot of them, they use it for, you know, the, the school, well, the school could do that, but the school needs a new roof, so they use their fund balance, that one-time thing, or the building needs a new roof, or something like that. And that's the best use for it. Now it's gone, it's done, and you haven't used that to supplement or your operations.
It doesn't become an operational budget line item.
Yeah.
Where every year now you're saying, well, gee, I used $100,000 on that line item, and either I'm going to have to increase that budget to tax for it, or I'm going to have to go back to the general fund and get it.
Exactly. I think it is a serious conversation we ought to have. I think the experience of 2008 forward should inform that conversation a great deal. We saw dramatic decreases in revenue line items that, I think, still sting to the people who experience that. And that should at least give us, I mean, that's certainly one of the motives for increasing our reserves, is that we were cognizant that there was, they were, you know, we were spending more money than on operations out of that piggy bank than we probably, than was probably safe to do. And I say "we," but that was happening during a time where you, you really were trying to make ends meet. And with, and I should say, and without that balance, that exercise becomes even more scary, so.
Yeah, I think it's worth discussing it, because I think the library bond is due next year. Is that true?
Well, the band, there'll be an interest payment that we can, we'll have the opportunity to send a full letter to the bond. And then you do have, now a choice, but a consideration to have an interest payment in six months or a year. So, you know, work those numbers out and get that to a project.
Those are a little flexible.
There's a little bit of flexibility.
And, and, and until we actually figure what the bond is going to be also, because it may not be as high as, as we may anticipate, we hope.
Keep it in the back of our minds for next year.
Anything else from the council? All righty. Denise, anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Shabbat?
Just one, want to make sure that we mentioned this, that the OPEB unfunded liability is still running at $24 million, actually, $24.5 million. That's another number you should be aware of.
Isn't that?
Page 48.
No. In fact, it will probably only continue to grow.
And that does include the school committee, the school department, so, not just the municipal side. So it's just another number you should be aware of when people ask, what's this the town, oh. Thank you.
All right. Anything else you want to add, Denise?
It was great to have you. Always, I actually, it was much.
Yeah.
This was smooth sailing.
Yeah, it really was. I mean, it went well this year, from start to finish, so we're very happy to see that.
We get a discount.
Great. Actually, I'm, I'm sure of the council that we will be sitting down and asking Denise, you know, to go over some things. And, you know, obviously, the general fund will be part of that discussion. Again, I want to thank Dan's Row and Associates, you know, for your hard work. It was great. Got it way in time, which is great, and everything else. Thank you again for your hard work on this. And as always, Denise, thank you. And, and you know where I'm coming from when I say thank you, because it's wonderful to have a great treasurer.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Interim Administrator, request approval of Police Pension Investment Advisor Administrative Services to Washington Trust Company, Providence, Rhode Island, as recommended by the Police Pension Board. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Peter J. Miniani, Vice President and Trust Officer of the Washington Trust Company.
And I would just like to note that I am recusing myself from this conversation.
So noted.
You can stand or sit, whatever you're more comfortable in.
I'll speak for a minute. Mr. President, council members, town officials, thank you so much for having me here, representing Washington Trust. I think I'll present some of the high points of Washington Trust that I think resonate, resonated with the Pension Board Committee. I'd commend them on a very rigorous process and a very professional process. Washington Trust investors, my organization manages $4.5 billion in client funds. A large and growing portion of those client funds are municipal pensions, OPEB, municipal endowments, and the like. It's an important part of what we do as a Rhode Island organization. We're chartered by the state of Rhode Island. We're chartered as a trust company, and that means a few important things. That means, with every client engagement, we serve to fiduciary standards. We've got a duty of loyalty to use our best efforts for the best interests of the participants, the pensioners, and the committee. We take that very seriously. It's a very serious engagement. We're a local company. We're, corporate headquarters is in Westley, Rhode Island. The investment group that I represent is based in Providence, Rhode Island. The representatives of my firm assigned to this engagement are the very top officers in our, in our line of business. Rajene Mikowski runs our trust administration group and is the hands-on, day-to-day administrator that'll be working with the town of Tivernan. Joan Kane, Investment Officer, formerly served as the Chief Investment Officer for the state of Rhode Island, brings a wealth of investment expertise, but more particularly... the state of Rhode Island, brings a wealth of investment expertise, but more particularly municipal expertise. So when we talk about doing our job with great rigor and attention to fiduciary duties, we have ERISA experts, we have UPMF experts. The prudent management of these funds is vital. It's an engagement that we take very seriously. I think that was reflected by the participation of the president of our bank at the finalist presentation, Mark Kim, the head of our wealth management group, myself and my team members. Be happy to entertain any questions. We're thrilled. This is an important relationship for us in a lot of ways. There are not many clients that we serve that were founded before Washington Trust in 1800. We're delighted that Tiverton will be added to that list, and I'd welcome any questions from this committee.
Again, I think, you know, welcoming you, first of all, but just if you could just give a general idea of exactly what the pension fund is, what it does, and how it's managed.
There are pension liabilities and pension assets, and a careful study identifies the best investment policy and the best plan for implementing the policy for the pension funds to meet its return objectives, to meet the needs of the pensioners, current participants and retirees. So there is an investment policy statement that's good. That's a good starting point for our review. We meet with pension board members on an ongoing basis to ensure actuarial assumptions and to talk about investment returns and performance data.
Anything for the other councils?
Nancy, I was just, if you're at liberty, who the other two RFP finalists were?
Yes, the Police Pension Board formed this RFP Advisory Committee, as councils are aware of. You went out to RFP, they reviewed them all, and three firms were interviewed by the RFP Advisory Commission. It was the Washington Trust, it was Rockland Trust, and it was John Bernie. And we do have copies of all those. We, I also have, I don't have enough copies for everyone, but we have copies of the presentation by Washington Trust. They were all interviewed. Everyone, all members of the Police Pension Board sat on that RFP Advisory Board as well, and that board made a unanimous decision, forwarded it to the Police Pension Board. They met last Wednesday, I believe. I was out at a funeral in the morning, but they did meet, and I believe, and the vote was to forward their recommendation to the council for its, you know, approval. We weren't quite sure that it had to come this way, but I thought it did, so. And I think the council, because it's a town investments essentially, needs to have the say on that. And anyone who wants any of these copies, I have them, as well as those from the other applicants as well. We have not notified them yet. We were looking for the council approval before taking the next steps on it.
Anything else from the council? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve Washington Trust as the, for the Police Pension Investment Control Officer, or whatever.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. We're delighted to serve the town, the police, the pensioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The Town Council, sitting as the Board of Licensing. Advertised Public Hames Hess Gas Station, number 339211, 1308 Stafford Road, request to expand victualing license to operate between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., 24 hours. Public Hames continued from December 13, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Yes, chief?
Mr. President, I did go to the business, pretty much checked out how they were going to, their hours of operation. They were, they assured me that they were going to be, the building was going to be locked, they were going to operate through a drop window, and my only other concern was the noise factor with the PA system in the summertime, and that's been addressed as well, so I recommend the...
Approve it.
The council approve it.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any questions from the council? All right, saying none, I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request to expand the victualing licenses to operate between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. for Hess Gas Station, number 39211, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Appointments and resignations. New request for appointment for board with vacancies. Street Advisory Committee, one vacancy, term expiring 1/12/2015. James Odell, 130 Warren Avenue. Is Mr. Odell here?
I don't see him.
Jim, I don't know. I talked to you before. Good evening.
Good evening. For the few people who don't know you, Jim, if you could just tell a little bit about yourself and your interest in the street committee.
My name's Jim Odell. I live on Warren Avenue. I've been somewhat politically active for about eight years now. I've never actually thrown myself into a volunteer effort. Work keeps me too busy. I was introduced to the street problem, the street committee problem, and decided it's time to get involved. I have a background in general construction, carpentry, also in excavation and drainage trades. I think I could get the street committee moving and get back to your goal of trying to introduce four streets per month.
Any questions from the council?
You've been here for a meeting since then, right?
Absolutely. In fact, I'd like to know what the meeting schedule is, if anyone has it.
The interim town administrator, I believe, can give you that information.
And this fill, or this potentially would fill the last vacancy on the committee?
Yes, this will be the fifth person.
Okay.
Would this possibly give them a quorum with a certain item that's come up recently?
Yes.
Could, yes.
Yeah, it could be three and two. Yeah, would be a quorum.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mr. James Odell to the Street Advisory Committee for the term expiring on January 12, 2015.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming forward. Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Kate Michaud, requests appointment of committee chairman, Stephen Hughes, vice president Cecil Leonard, and secretary Kate Michaud. Kate, apparently, your dance card is not full enough.
Yeah. The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee had their first meeting last month and unanimously decided to make the recommendations that you've received for officers, and according to the setup of the committee, the council approves the officers, so, all right?
Okay. Any discussion from the council?
I just want to note for the record what an outstanding kickoff meeting that was. Kate had done a fantastic job to kind of transform Town Hall here into a very nicely put-together facilitated session with folks, and took a lot of time to obviously prepare and deliver that, and I think it made a difference to kick that particular group off on the right foot. So I do want to kind of acknowledge that. That was very well done.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of the following officers to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Stephen Hughes, committee chairman, Cecil Leonard, vice chairman, and Kate Michaud, secretary.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Congratulations, and thank you all for really stepping up.
Thank you.
No one finished business. Financial business. Approval of three-year revenue projections to forward to school department.
Mr. President, this is routinely done each year, I guess, and when I looked at the title, it looks like it's only the revenue that has to go. I have already spoken with the school department, because this has been ready since before the holidays, but I had to get it onto a meeting for council approval. They're very much aware, and when they get it, they'll send us what their responsibility is. So I'm looking for the approval to forward to the school department.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Salute. Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Interim Administrator, Fire Chief Robbie D. Lloyd.
You've received Chief Lloyd's goals, explanation of the current year ones that he's achieved, and what he intends to set as goals, and how we will meet them for the next year. Again, I think this is a responsibility of the permanent town administrator, but in keeping consistent with what the council seems to have set up to this point, I'm recommending the 2% salary increase.
Okay.
This is the second year of a three-year contract.
Okay.
Chief's here.
What is the date of, what is the effective date?
I think it's January 7th. Is it January 7th, sir?
January 1st.
Oh, it's on the letter.
A day they were living in for the effective.
Right now. I didn't think that was the date you were asking.
Okay. Chief?
I put forward, I have tried to meet every goal that we've had. I believe that we've exceeded it, and I think we've moved forward as a department. I'd like to say that I can take total credit for myself with it, but I don't, it's just, it's a team effort. We built a team, and the team has always worked together to move things forward, and I, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished.
Mr. President, just a quick question. Chief Lloyd, on your 2014 goals, the pre-plan program to have every building diagrammed and placed on your server, is that just commercial buildings? Or what's this called?
Right now, commercial. I'd like to eventually stretch it out to residential.
Okay, thanks.
So that, the way I want to have it is that, right now, we're getting the computers into the vehicles. We're getting a database built up of every diagram of every building, independent of what the assessor's office has. This is a more complex one. We'll have address, have owners, have hazmat material in it, so that any incident we go to, we can just open up the computer on scene and see exactly what is there, linking it to doors, linking it to shut-offs, have contact information, and that would be an ongoing process where we'd continually be going out. It's all pot. People see the trucks out, and they're not quite sure what they're doing. That's what they're doing. They're out, they measure the buildings, they draw the walls, draw the doors, electrical shut-offs, gas shut-offs, everything that's important about that building we'd need in an emergency.
Yeah, just a question on that also, chief. When they're building things in town, once the blueprints, quote-unquote, are done, does the fire department and police department get a copy of those, so they know what?
We originally get a copy of every blueprint, because ours go through fire prevention, but we're not looking in that in-depth. Ours is a more generalized, it goes into an electronic format that we have set out so that we can step through everything that we're looking for, a particular piece of information. And all of this ties together with the ISO rating that we had recently done. That is part of their numbers that they give out for the change in the ISO status, which helps with the insurance rates. So it all ties together, but it's also part of building familiarization, so that firefighters are going out and they're seeing these buildings.
All right, any other questions from the chief? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve an annual salary increase for Chief Lloyd on 2% for year two of a three-year contract.
Second.
Effective January 7th.
Effective January 4th, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Interim Administrator, DPW Director Stephen Belucci, requires approval of annual salary increase affecting January 7th, 2014, from 82.4 to 84.048, 2%.
Similarly, this is the same situation. You have received copies of goals, both what has been done through the past year and what's anticipated, that he's hopeful, and ways to get to the next year's goals, and recommending the same as all the other departments had to approve this year, 2%.
Thank you. Mr. Belucci?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I think we had a very successful year at the DPW, meeting the goals that we projected. The pay-throughs program and the savings that are being generated by the reduction in rubbish and the increase in recycling is just a tribute to all the citizens who've come aboard heavily, and I think our numbers after the annual report is done for this year are going to be extremely good. So that's a program that we can really be proud of at the landfill. We haven't had any issues with DEM, no citations. Our license obviously was renewed, and we carry forward there. I think the biggest accomplishment was getting the town-owned or the town-accepted streets all categorized and coming up with kind of an overall view of all those streets and what it costs to bring them all up to kind of a new, as new condition. We never had that before, never really had a handle on that number, and now we have something to work towards to try to, you know, attack the streets and fund them and get them repaired and built. So it's a baseline data that we needed, and it's something we can work forward for. So I think all in all, we've kept our fleet going, plowing snow, and hopefully, we'll continue to do that.
Great. I just have, it's just an observation. I know we have the red bag days for the holidays, that you don't have to use them.
Yes.
And this year, it was, what, from New Year's?
Yeah, we started on a Monday through a Friday, yeah.
Okay. And again, I think there was a little confusion.
There was.
On people's part, because they figured because Christmas, quote-unquote, would be a big trash day, and realizing that it actually didn't fall into the free bag.
Week.
Weeks.
Yes, I know.
It didn't.
It was a following Monday. You would have to hang on to your...
Yeah, yeah, you would have to. But a lot of people didn't understand. They go, it's the holiday, quote-unquote.
No, all right. I hung on to my bag.
Well, hopefully, the code red that was out in the budget is exactly what it was for. We bang out an announcement to every citizen and kind of clear it. No matter how many times we put in the newspaper and announce it, we still have problems. And someone even come and said, Steve, for four bucks, is it really worth it? And there's some truth to that, to some truth. We collected three times as much rubbish, which is fine, that's the big Christmas rush, but that's what they said. Take 100 bucks off my taxes, yeah. Four bucks, all this confusion, is it really worth it? So I guess I'll leave you with that.
Speaking on behalf of Mr. Belucci, I know that the landfill committee took this under consideration for at least two meetings, starting a couple of months before Christmas, and the final decision was that no matter what we do, we're going to confuse people.
Exactly.
But let's just put out a room. And that's how it went. And I'm sure, I think we had the same confusion last year, which was the reason we tried to come up with it.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah.
And I think with the holiday falling in the middle of the week, it really...
That was a hard one.
Yeah.
That was a hard one.
So we can't blame Mr. Belucci. It was the landfill committee.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Belucci?
I'll entertain a motion. I move that we approve the request for annual salary increase for Mr. Belucci in the amount of 2% effective January 7th, 2014.
Second. I have a motion second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, approval of preliminary municipal for year 2014-15 municipal budget being forwarded to the Budget Committee.
You received this on your desk tonight. It's stamped the 13th, 2004. I did try to, the numbers that were dis... I did try to, the numbers that were discussed on Saturday have been changed here, and I went through a few of the descriptions. I'll review it once more to clean it up before sending it on to the Budget Committee. It has to be clocked in by Wednesday. I did have a discussion with the fire chief and the police chief, as I told you Saturday, that I would have them come in to make sure they were aware of changes that were made and why they were made, and I did go over the five-year analysis with them and anything. And I told them they are both here. If they had an issue, they would discuss it with the council.
Chief Lloyd?
I just want, if you're ready to discuss that now. The interim administrator had come forward with the changes that was made in the fire department budget, and the apparatus maintenance and the station maintenance. I think I can live within that. We'll just cut back on some projects. My only caution is with the overtime one, it's so volatile, I don't know. It's every time I turn around, I had another gentleman hand me a family medical leave request tonight. So I have no idea where it's going to go. I know based upon the numbers that I worked out for the overtime and what was used in the past, and what we're going forward was the number that I projected. I can try to do it, but it's out of my control to stay within that number unless we have contract relief on it, because that's where I'm at. I can't, I have to fill those spots.
Something we're aware of, and again, this is first-passed, this budget.
Absolutely understand, but I feel I wouldn't be doing my job if I at least didn't put it forward. I would like it to be, we have, there was one year where we had men in earlier, we got them on board, and we were able to cut down on the overtime. But we're still battling forward with that one. And that goes back with the other issues that we've talked about, trying to get people in. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Hello. I did speak with Mrs. Mellow, and I understand some of the areas she's coming from. Energy costs, as you know, they're unpredictable. I do anticipate better control of gasoline, measuring gasoline with this new system that I had, I tried to get in 10 years ago. I think it'll give us a more accurate reading on that, and I'm glad that that's coming to pass. The code red is in my budget. That's a town-wide system, so as long as the people know that that's not just for the police department.
Yes.
I think the adjustments they made in some of these, the salary accounts and some of those things, I did go over the sheer salary, again, proposed with all the new contract, it's accurate as you have it now. Some of the things that do flex, when we have people leave or retire, sometimes you'll get a newer person, and so we don't fill that position right away due to the scheduling of the academy, or advertising. We've hired three dispatches that have left just in this fiscal year, so that does make some salary adjustment available, so we can use it possibly at the end of the year to address overtime issues. The only thing I question, I would question the council on, our capital improvements. We didn't get into that, Nancy and I, too much. Could you tell me where you're standing on those items?
Again, we've done first-pass. There's going to be more cuts to this budget, I can tell you. But different capital expenditures and things like that, we will look at again. We haven't made any decisions on any of those things yet.
Okay, that was one thing that Nancy wasn't sure on, and.
Oh, the parking lot was one thing we did.
You cut that?
Yeah.
Well, then I would ask you that we at least consider that, again, we want to address the parking lot, we just dismantled for the gasoline pump. I have a mess on the side that I'd like to have that fixed. I'll adjust, we'll flex and be flexible on that, but that's a mess that we don't want to leave, it stays for years and years, so we'll visit that one, I guess. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. And again, just a reminder, this is, you know, the council's first major pass of this budget. This is in order to meet the requirements to get this to the Budget Committee. It is only a preliminary budget attempt, and I can guarantee you that this council will meet again, and we will be making further cuts and making some major decisions on some items and areas. So I want everybody to realize that this is not a final budget, this is only a preliminary first-pass.
I want everybody to realize also that this took a lot of thought and a lot of work, and actually, we were here for six hours on Saturday, painfully going over every item, so this is taking a lot of our time, and it's worth taking a lot of our time.
These weekend meetings are open to the public, too, for anybody who's interested. Mrs. Black joined us for that meeting. Anyone else who has anything to do on the weekends, well done.
Maybe bring us lunch. Mr. President, I do want to say that even with the cuts that were made, and I do commend the council, in my 20-some years, I haven't seen so much work put into the budget and line by line. But on these cuts, as going over them with the two chiefs in particular today, we did discuss how they may be able to reach this, and, you know, it seems to be, a big problem seems to be the time span between advertising and actually filling positions, which is driving our overtimes. And I think the fire chief was amiable, we're going to try to work with personnel, we'll try to somehow get the time condensed so that it's less time to get them filled, that's going to help with the overtime. And even with the chief, the police chief, there are, you know, we don't agree on everything, but it seemed to be where it was, and they were receptive to, hey, they're going to have to live within their budget, you know, whatever it is, we can't certainly go in with this percent. So they acknowledge it at that, and hopefully, as time goes on, we can stick some items in, especially capital improvements, we'll try.
Mr. President, I just wanted to add one comment to that, so there's no misunderstanding, especially with our fire chief, our police chief, our DPW director. On most of these items, we're not trying to second-guess anybody, we're not in the business. We don't know what's needed at the fire department or the police department. The decisions that we're making, for the most part, is really not enough of the second-guess you as to whether something was needed or not needed. We simply have to recognize as a town council what the economic restraints are. And the mere fact that we say no this year does not mean that it may not be yes next year. I'm not speaking for the town council on this, but I'm just speaking for myself. So do keep in mind, a decision whether or not to fund a particular item this year doesn't reflect at all on the credit of the recommendation that was made.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Motion that we approved the preliminary municipal budget FY 2014-15, so that it can be forwarded to the Budget Committee.
Second.
I have a motion, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, Town Planning Board, request acceptance by the town of the constructed portion of West Mellow Drive, planning board recommendation.
As you can see from the paperwork that was submitted, West Mellow Drive was constructed quite a long time ago. The subdivision was approved in 1986. At some point in the process, the plan, the construction was actually altered originally. West Mellow and East Mellow were supposed to connect, and that's the way it's plotted. But due to wetlands and other issues, they will never connect. So it came to light that West Mellow had never been accepted, although the town had been caring for it for quite some time. So there was a small amount of surety money that was actually still left over, there's a cash surety for that subdivision. So what we did was we notified the developer that we were intending to use that surety money. He did not respond, and we went ahead and we used that money for some minor repairs, and also to have an as-built plan of the constructed portion drawn up by a licensed surveyor. Because there are some, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there were some new houses, and we just wanted to make sure everything that was supposed to be on private property was on private property, and that the road would be unobstructed. So that as-built plan was done, and there are no encroachments into the public right away, and the planning board voted to recommend the constructed portion of West Mellow Drive. And that's also, that request was also recommended by the Director of Public Works.
All right, just again, because we've talked about this in other places, but the road surface is standard?
It's not ideal, because it's been, it was constructed quite some time ago, but it is acceptable.
Any questions from the council? I want to entertain a motion.
I move to accept the constructed portion of West Mellow Drive, as depicted on the as-built plan appeared by Civil Engineering Concepts.
Happily second.
We have a motion and a seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very glad this is finally put to bed.
Ms. Barbara Pelletier, placing pause, request additional dog waste collection stations near the Nanak Quocket Bridge and vicinity of main fire station.
Hi, as you know, we've installed five dog waste stations. Up to now, we pay for the servicing, et cetera. We believe it sends a good message of picking up after your dog, and we've been made aware of the fact that there's really nothing in the north end of town and in the south end of town, well, not south end, but where there are sidewalks that end. So a good location would be near the fire station, up in the north end, and somewhere in the Nanak Quocket Bridge, in the middle part of town, where I think it has to be placed on town property. We can't just place it by the side of a numbered state road. So there are places on both ends that maybe we can work out, maybe the fire chief can designate a spot, and maybe somebody in Public Works can show us where to put it, near Nanak Quocket Bridge. Where, or find a private.
Can I ask Mr. Belucci regarding town property and the best locations?
So the only other comment I have, if somebody wants to build their muscles, or knows of somebody who wants to do some service project, there are two holes to be dug, I have a post-hole digger, and I do have bags of concrete, feel free to contact me, and we can install them. And now, just to send a good message, the one with the biggest dog to walk, let me
Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. I would entertain a motion, but I just want to say, subject to the interim town administrator meeting with fire department and DPW to figure out the best locations for these waste collection stations.
I would, no, second.
We have a motion, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? No bids and requests. Town Administrator?
This is the distribution. I wasn't sure whether you ever actually received this, kind of came in around, I think around November, but I did have a meeting with Kristen Bellum from the church community, and this is our approved award. It's been sent for the final signature on the state, but they had received everything, so I had to sign it. I thought you'd want a copy.
Yeah, I think we were given a breakout, I don't know if we got it in this format, but we got a breakout of what was approved. Thank you. Yeah, this is what we got. Just this thing, yeah. Okay, council announcements, comments, and, I'm sorry.
I just have a couple more announcements. You've got a postcard on the Tiverton Business Forum, yes, you did. And I believe she's, Sue Isia Gill, and she said, I think it's 450 businesses that was mailed out to. So I'll try to remind you again before November 11th, that's the date of that meeting.
February 11th.
I'm sorry, February. Did I say November?
Yes. You did.
Oh. All right, and I want to make an announcement that the, there will be a flu clinic at the North Tiverton Fire Station. Chief Lloyd has sent that it's on Wednesday, this Wednesday, January 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it is for anyone, it is free. Is it six years old and up? Chief, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
No problem.
There is a poster, it is posted, though, but I think it's six years.
It is from six, the Director of Health has come out and stated that this year that the flu is getting to a pandemic level, and they are requesting to get as many people immunized as they can. So we were asked if we could participate to hit the East Bay in this area, and we offered to do that, they wanted to do it very, very quickly, so there's short notice on it. But really, anybody can come. We don't care where they reside, the point is to try to stop this flu from spreading, because it will affect workforces and everything else. So it's free to anybody. If you have a health card, you bring it, if they can charge it to your health, that's fine. If they can't, that's not a problem, they just want to get this flu out, this flu shot out, or it spreads even further. We have to stop it.
Thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate how important it is to get the flu shot. I've got mine. How many on the council got their flu shots?
I am immune to most diseases.
And just a couple of comments. I'm assuming that it would suit with the council, it's about time that we have our legislators in, since they're back in session. So I will try to see if they're available for our next meeting or the meeting after, and try and get someone once a month in to keep us abreast of what the legislation is going and where it's going, in case the council has questions.
It might behoove us to have some ideas ready for their.
Right, so you'll know now that we'll try to get them to come on a regular basis, but it's going to be productive for both them as well. And I do apologize, Kate had given me an RFP that she wanted on tonight's agenda, it'll have to be on the next agenda, and that was for the comp plan consultant, so it'll be on the January 27th meeting.
Okay. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
I have one. The Arts Council invites the public to the Arts Reception this coming Sunday, January 19th, at the town hall here, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., to meet the artists, who have their paintings shown on the walls of the town council here. They're magnificent, the amount of color. The paintings on this side are from Batrice Giraldo, and on this side is from our representative of our town Arts Council members, Madeline Diogenes, Carolyn Hall, Wanda Longshaw, and Richard Sadina. So we would like to see you here on, on Sunday, it's really a good time, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You got it. No, go for it. All right. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the business forum. The card is here, February 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Four Corners Meeting House. The speakers will be Marcel Valois, who is fairly recently appointed Director of the Rhode Island EDC, Jody Sullivan from Newport Chamber, and Scott Humphrey, who's the president of our own local EDC, will be speaking. Bill and I are going to be moderating, there's going to be snack foods available, and it's free to come and enjoy sort of the state of the state, state of the local, and state of whatever we can, you know, put together for business. And we encourage business owners, operators, et cetera, to attend and participate.
Want to give them the RSVP?
Oh, you can RSVP to the telephone number, which is 401-625-6718. And I believe that is a man number, that's going to you, Kate, or the lovely Kate Micho will answer that phone and write your name down. Or you can email me, bpelletier, that's B-P-E-L-L-E-T-I-E-R, at tiverton.rigov, where you can throw something at me at the supermarket, and I'll try and write your name down. And we're encouraging everyone to RSVP, so that we have an accurate. Yes. Count for our snacks, and from a building size perspective, so, thank you. Hope to see you there.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
All right, I just have one thing. As Ms. Medea said on Saturday, we worked a little more, about six hours on this budget, and obviously, we've got many more hours to work, but I just want to personally thank this council. Those of us who've been around a while, this particular council has worked diligently on the budgets for this town, and obviously, there's more work to do. But I want everybody in town to understand that this council is.
But I want everybody in town to understand that this council is looking out for your best benefit. And, you know, but again, we realize there are things that, as a town, we must have and must take care of. So, but just know that this council is working as hard as it can to ensure that services are what they should be in this town and to hold the tax rate as, as low as we possibly can. But again, we're not going to do that at the cost of the health and safety of the town. But I just want to thank this council personally for their hard work and diligence.
Thank you, Lucy.
Okay. Town Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item for public dissemination regarding Tiverton versus James Mosteletier. This is a copy of a DEM notice, which, by the way, was not sent to the town, but we received a copy through the good graces of Senator De Palma, who forwarded it to us, basically saying that now that they have found out about our success in having their use of the property for composting found to be illegal, DEM is suspending their agricultural composting regulation, registration, rather. So, just for your information. And along with that, the Pelletiers have appealed that conviction to the Rhode Island Supreme Court, and we're proceeding towards that venue.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, if I, if I can ask one.
Yes.
Can we ask why the DEM isn't just removing the license altogether and just, and just suspending it indefinitely, which is, is that, can that be done?
I, I'll throw this out. I think, I think the town solicitor's going to say, "We can ask."
It's indicative of the lack of action of DEM throughout the last several years on this matter, that they did it several months later, didn't bother to tell us, and only did a halfway action.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, the town clerk, is she in the building?
I'm all set, thanks.
All right. Councilor Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A1, Ray Personnel Performance, Gareth Ames, Code Enforcement Officer, notice given.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And continuing executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42, Section 465A2, Ray Litigation, Town Solicitor Quarterly Litigation Report.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A2, Ray Opinion Letter to Auditor.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A4, Ray Investigation, Maintenance Foreman.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A2, Ray Litigation, Larry Faulkner versus Town of Tiverton.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A2, Ray Litigation, L.A.R. Construction Company, Inc., versus Town of Tiverton.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 465A5, Ray Acquisition of Rural Property for Public Purpose, Specifically Stonebridge Gas Station.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.